I don't look very, I don't look very healthy. Yeah, I'm very tired. There's a lot of hot air in the room, it's gonna get warm.
Don't be hard on yourself.
I wouldn't speak for me. What else that you're on?
Okay. Good evening, and thank you for remotely attending tonight's council meeting. I would like to ask for your patience and cooperation as we continue using technology to technology available till we are capable to hold a working meeting. The camera in the council chambers is set up to show those members of council attending in person. The platform we are using this evening has a raised hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach a point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand with my allegiance. Would uh, please call the roll.
Mayor Kelly.
Here.
Compu Novak.
Here.
Compu Fisher.
Here.
Compu Kennedy. Here. Compu Powers.
Here.
Compu Reed.
Here.
Compu Carefully.
Here.
Corn President.
We have three presentations tonight. First presentation will be an update on Telly Park from Tom and Debbie Minnis.
Um, the best that I recall, I think, addressed council from the January earlier February, the guy in there at Telly Park, and just thought, see if I could give you a good update. Um, last week, we had an opportunity to meet with your city manager, Henry and Jay Brown. So I did a bit of update and communicated with them, and I think that's uh, the presentation that uh, probably most. That said, since our last meeting, uh, despite the COVID, we were able to secure contact since nine and very early construction, which we believe the work at Telly Park. The estimated start time was approximately five to six weeks, depending on his work and work schedule. Uh, so it looks like probably in July, early August. Probably take a week to two weeks, probably a couple of weeks if you see, with the work. So at this much time, we just have to wait for these, for those schedules, right? But that's the appointment update that he provided us. Um, and they're keeping the files, providing the materials for the park. When we met with Andy and Shane, a couple of things as far as, uh, facilities in the city. Number one investment in the meter, uh, across the park, on the paddles, the street side of the live meters. So it looks like that we will be effective getting a small trench across the park, providing assistance for the work that's going to be done, and probably some of the lighting, stuff that we need to provide the city. Those are the trenchings, and we just have to take a cut across sidewalk, if we move west toward the church. Uh, and uh, Jay Richardson said that the city, uh, he's got missions to do with this still that is. Uh, the other thing that the city was, could provide for us, is just temporary fencing, or security. It's basically, we change, right, maybe a different orange fencing, or you know, that could be anything, or put some stands, different books in, and maybe there to see that. But just, just because of this, it's technically, certainly, certainly work that is being done by the construction and stuff. Fundraising.
Well, can you speak longer?
Sure. So fundraising is, uh, ongoing. Uh, at this point, we're differently, we're all, or let's put, uh, expenditure on contact if you prefer, but for government that will, will exceed maybe, and exceed, hopefully, the amount of spend that the city is paying to extend it towards the funding of construction of the park. Everyone, if you're able to. I think that was it, but we just thought it was important to give you an update, because again, the city's gonna be, you know, involved a bit. Uh, I guess the last thing is that, there're gonna be some stain, some information stain, and uh, before, uh, the former recreation that, uh, sort of, that, we had purchased, uh, the signs, type of thing, that, uh, you can see down the visiting carts, really, uh, that have inside, and we're just having a couple of goals, maybe four goals, that, uh, we hope that, uh, we already have a, uh, contact with the city that will pay for it, but change, that he's, he will do the ordering, as long as he gets the information from that, from that, that's what, I can't remember who it was, was, uh, who was gonna, uh, provide that tour, but they said they'd be willing to do that for us. But still pay for it. They already have relationships with the city, that obviously, they're, they've been out, but yeah, that's one of the things that the city was gonna provide to us. And are you guys through there as well? Is there anything else that we discussed that, maybe we should discuss with council? That you should call, or?
I think with Simon and the Pox.
The Pox, we got, we got the Pox, it was a thing, it was a, I think it was something with Pox. So there's gonna be four, nine, probably two by cameras, but it's gonna be integrated with a, uh, it's gonna be, uh, third work, uh, four, five, six. Yeah, so definitely, when we have a fund set based on fundraising, we'll invite representatives to the city, and we'll make it, either there, or whoever makes the determination as to do, to do what they're intending to do. And we'll give you a bunch of heads up with Pox, because we might add a lot, uh, funding for groundbreaking here, struggling, which would be a different thing in the paper, and generally, we'll, we're not rating, but fundraising, but there'll be a fourth or one, we'll be literally, we're putting the shovel into the ground, and it's, it's end of August, end of July, early August, somewhere around that time, or, or hopefully, uh, the place there. Few questions from council, um, if you have anything else.
Sounds great.
Good, good, and then, we're looking forward to it, and, uh, I'm very pleased that, uh, um, the business is local, um, and he worked with Larry, he's been very, very cooperative, and he's certainly, he's actually doing great job, and the city will probably work to the best of his ability, and someday, hopefully, make a, you know, a loan in the shelter, and we're all, and we're all at home, and I pray the staff can reflect on everything that he did for, for the city of ours. All right? Uh, and lastly, as I ended my last meeting, I mean, in this, if I didn't take this opportunity, that we are still accepting donations, and anybody that would like to make donations at Telly Park, if you sent us a dollar, I, or eight fourteen Green Street, uh, in New York, and any and all donations, regardless of size, are more than welcome. Thank you very much, you're, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got three nots. The next, you can't, so you're really gonna have to yell. If you, uh, and in my place, always, I'm a square, I'm a big guy, right? Can you make sure your speaker, or your microphone has a legitimate microphone, and you hold it closer to your mouth, you, you will find that it's not you.
This one, that's, that's a big, that's a big.
I can't hear anything on the podium.
Where was that microphone?
The one that goes on.
You just have to talk right into it.
I just, you just said that I was, letting, letting it be known.
Uh, the next presentation will be regarding the impact of staff, a bunch of overtime adjustments at the police department, which will be made by Lieutenant Rob Buttstock.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and I hope everybody can hear you okay. I wanted to do this presentation to the council and the mayor, so you're all informed and understand that the impact of the Augenburg Police Department had, due to the recent approval of Council Revolution Bill number thirty-seven, could specify layoffs and cuts in the Augenburg Police Department's overtime budget. As you're aware, the Augenburg City Council voted in a special meeting on May sixth, twenty twenty, to lay off four police officers, as well as reduce the overtime, uh, twenty twenty overtime budget by forty percent. This has created a significant impact on the operation of the police department. I will go through each period and explain directly impacted that. Versus our staffing levels. The direction for the city manager was to lay off four police officers. This number was put out in public council, which I would consider to be a special meeting. Within a day or so, that agenda went to the public, the chief of police announced his retirement. There was also already one open position. Subsequently, on May sixth, when the resolution was discussed at the special meeting, there were amendments made to the resolution. We were expecting one of those amendments would be to change the number of layoffs. Changed the number of layoffs that was proposed, as the chief announced his retirement, because it was an open position already. The amendment did not address this line of, of the resolution, despite the retirement and the open position, the council voted to keep the number of four. In discussions by then-chief of police Andrew Henning, and then-city manager Sarah Purdy, the actual four officers who were to be affected by this action were identified by name, and they were submitted for. Officers Andrew Lang, Christopher Evans, Brandon Lomas, and Ryan Brown were all named to do the potential pending layoffs. Three officers immediately began to seek other employment options. As a direct result of the resolution, Andrew Lang, Christopher Evans, Brandon Lomas, all transferred to other departments. This is a significant loss of investment for the city by these three officers. It takes about ten months to get an officer hired, trained, and counting his manpower on the road. Other communities now taking advantage of the city investment. If and when these officers are allowed to be replaced, we will be paying those costs to get them. This is significant monetarily, but it's also significant in fact that recruitment has not only been an issue for us, but for police work in general. The amount of individuals interested in pursuing a career in local law enforcement is sharply declining. The amount of people who fly from, from civil service to us has decreased, and this is compounded by the fact that we now share a list with the county. When multiple agencies are picking up the same list, they're competing for the same candidate, but also, given the choice, those few candidates will be working with stability, and will certainly have a chain clause, when they have the ability to look at offers, offer from other local agencies. We lost great people and great assets who were quickly hired by other agencies, saw the significant advantages. Since two thousand seven, the Augenburg Police Department has faced some of its worst staffing and retention problems. The department has hired thirty-five new personnel since two thousand seven, and it's a significant number of personnel hired and trained. Whenever we have hires, we have the full complement, we then lose personnel until we never realize when it's happened. Our authorized manpower is twenty-eight. A couple of years ago, with the council approval, we went to twenty-nine. And this was pre-architecting made by unions at the time, over the impact that the airport had on our officers' workload. I do not believe we ever got to twenty-ninth person. During the two thousand eighteen budget, we were cut back to twenty-eight again for budgetary reasons. With the added position of an SRO, Super Resource Officer, in two thousand nineteen, if it's not back though, we essentially went to twenty-seven. In addition to the four, four positions previously mentioned, we have three officers, one patrolman, two detectives, that are out on work-related injuries. One detective should be back to work in about another month, but when that detective returns, another will be leaving for about a month, starting at the end of July. This leaves only two investigators for the summer months, and I do not anticipate the return of the other patrolmen or detectives anytime soon at all. We have a patrolman going off in July for surgery on work-related injuries, and expected recovery period of eight weeks. We do still have one patrolman that is in field training, and if allowed to remain working for the city, he will come with manpower sometime around September, in following the year. Our day shifts are especially busy, with the added duty of manning the airport in the hall body. When school was not in session, the SRO would work briefly on day shift. He helped to alleviate the added workload in the airport and the hall body, to combat the potential previous overtime costs. With the departure of the above-mentioned officers, I've had the SRO back due to the team, fill the shortings from the experts of the officers. Even with him back, we're still down ten officers through open positions and injuries, for a twenty-eight man department, a department of our side with a thirty-five percent reduction in manpower and significant. The SRO is an Augenburg City School District project division, that we get the benefit of using during the times that schools are off. As I stated earlier, I'd have to have the SRO back in our rotation, and with a significant reduction in manpower, I don't know that we'll be able to maintain that division. This would be a blow to our entire community. Recently, the SRO was restored, through both the Augenburg City School District and the city, recognizing the significant community police benefits of having an SRO in our schools, as well as being prepared to pop for the critical incident that we prefer. We are not immune to Augenburg anymore from the tragedy of DC nationwide in our schools. In this short time at the Augenburg City School District, the former doctor fine made a significant impact in the life of the students, the staff, and the faculty. The benefits of his presence are numerous. Many were not immediately seen, or many were immediately seen and handled, but so many more were not. The connection that that division makes already absolutely does create a safer school and a safer community. So we understand our minimum staffing levels. Our minimum staffing on the road is two officers per dispatch. The expectation of this, or the exception to this, is that on the weekends, from seven PM to three AM on Friday, we're, our minimum staffing is three officers per dispatch. This is the absolute minimum, the road can safely operate. There is also contractual time off for our dealers. There are periods of the year where contractual time usage increases. This is considered during the summer months, where we already have a number of officers cut to the off at any one time. And we extend school breaks through the obvious reasons of family and the fall. Due to the cut in staffing levels and the usage of contractual time off, the shifts most certainly be minimum staff during these times, but more likely will need to be staffed with overtime themselves. I'll address the reduction in budgeted overtime. The reduction of our twenty twenty budgeted operational overtime is significant. Operational overtime goes from hundred seventy-two thousand, seven hundred eighty-four dollars, to fifty-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-four dollars. Exactly, that's not even talked with one patrolman, detective, salary, and fringe. It takes the obvious to say that police department is a twenty-four-seven operation. As with any profession, we can only work so many hours in a day, we have days off and a previous, previously stated day of contractual time off. Reduction in staffing levels directly increases the amount of overtime that takes to staff the shifts, and sometimes shifts to get the job done. By this, I mean to say that the very nature of police work is such that much of the overtime is very unpredictable. The need to call in manpower, or hold over manpower is very real. Call volume ties, you know, the last decade or so, our officers are increasingly answering calls with more five, and more complicated measures. Recent bail reform and discovery laws put a tremendous amount of extra work on our department. Many police departments, prosecutor's office, and public defender's offices have added staff and created internal provisions, just to keep up with the workload pressure from this added reform. We did not. The investigation is needed in very active, very busy. The amount of surfboards for various crimes that are executed by investigations has increased significantly. We do act, or help from outside agencies, if possible. Uh, these types of investigations are often time-consuming, labor-intensive, but they're also necessary to solve crimes, and proactive with our issue in these communities today. Our community is called upon, our department is called upon to make sure that many planned community events are a safe and fun atmosphere for all our citizens and our guests. These events are plentiful, and we just can't not staff them. Some require a significant amount of personnel to staff safely, both public and our personnel. To recognize this and not adequately staff them with significant liability on the city. The many events we are called upon to staff include the Battle of Augenburg Green Act, Multiple Pounder Day event, Memorial Day parade, T-Go Festival, Bootlegger's Legion, Oxford's November Summer Series, the Light Night Parade, and many others. There is additional talk of the O E B R Best Two-Day Concert in a professional official program in the future. These have added significant impact on our resources. All of these events simply cannot be staffed without operational overtime. These events alone could take much for our entire amended overtime budget. In addition to the events, officers are also called upon to provide security through between thirteen and D-Team, which is the Augenburg International Airport. The hours required to provide that security, not including the administrative duties on the backside of it, is essentially equivalent to including one full-time officer on the road. This does not take into account for delays, which are weather, mechanical, or even pilot time off delays. The delays are often, particularly during the winter months. My knowledge, the airport continually tries to recruit additional air carriers. If one does happen to sign on with British portico, I don't know that our manpower will allow us to maintain airport security long-term. Additionally, to the airport, officers require to make four appearances and attend mandatory training, and there are many other unplanned events, such as prison transport, no details after us. As much of this is done, keeping overtime in mind, but much of it is to not be avoided, in order to still maintain services. Both area police departments are working on modified twelve-hour schedule for road personnel. We were asked by council a few years back to look at twelve-hour shifts and try reducing overtime. There is, there is an upfront cost to the twelve-hour shift, as each officer works eight to four hours in a given period at the post of heat. However, that is taken by the officers in straight time, to an agreement. That upfront investment is seen as a way to upreduce overall overtime cost by dividing the department into four rotating platoons, which carry that personnel through shifts, and is supposed to reduce overtime expenses overall. To then start reducing staffing levels, this drives the overtime cost back up. Twelve-hour shifts are, are also a recruitment tool, without them, it needs to be extremely difficult to lead, to lead a team of area departments, and to retain employees once opening becomes available in other area departments. The nature of police work is such that officers are required to work nights, holidays, and weekends. Due to this, officer scale of the twelve-hour shift increases their quality of work for on and off the job. We implemented a twelve-hour shift about a year and a half ago. And the staffing level decreased, twelve-hour shift will be looked at again. This will cause morale and retention issues, and future recruitment issues. At full staff, twelve-hour model clearly does have a potential to sustain overall. There are non-monetary effects to all of my spoken to people. Morale is imperative for the success of any organization, private or public, and artists take a significant hit. Health and safety is another. The fewer officers we have, the more our regular shift overtime will increase. Officers can only safely work so many hours. They're only allowed to work a maximum of eighteen hours, before minimally taking six hours off occasionally. This is probably health and safety issues. People will retire if they pick more often, and make mistakes more easily. Keeping in mind, airport security, community events, mandatory care, mandatory training, and many other unexpected events to come up, it is not believable in thirty summer months, for a shift on cylinder needs that additional resources, has to be called in just at the end of the hall body. Personnel becomes stretched thin, and become difficult to fulfill the regular shifts in overtime need. Time off is counted first. When manpower is low, there may be no time to count. Due to the maximum amount of hours that officers can take to work, the minimum amount of hours they have to do to have off in a full shift, the force pool will start to get smaller. That is to say that, the result of all of this will be forced overtime. The Augenburg Police Department and its members are proud of what they do, and the strategy of all time, the strategy of all is after them, while providing professional courage to official service. However, to maintain all the depth of the department is imperative that the department receives the resources it needs. The actual daily overtime, per revolution, was supposed to amount to a hundred and fourteen thousand hours. Keeping in mind, all of what I said, I do not know, I do not know what the actual savings by the end of the year will be. And I do not see how the department will not rule over to revise twenty twenty operational overtime rate to two thousand, seven hundred eighty-four dollars, no matter how personnel or shift is there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you. We, we actually, we, that's.
So, you want four guys back?
Absolutely.
Any overtime?
I don't know.
Do you think there's a possibility, um, for training for those officers, the bar events completed, right, that two, two of them are still in the academy, successfully graduated the academy?
One had previously been paid for going to that.
Okay.
He was something here, pretending, he was hired, and is going to our field training program, which is a requirement of, of any new academy. Once he was paid a hundred and sixty hours for us, he was going to get into this yet, for the police academy that he was doing. Uh, the other officer, we did hire a detective police academy. Police cadets are, to put on, for cause of COVID, going to be re-used on July sixth, with one year to train them up, we're gonna try to get everything in, and he will just be in the building, eighteen hundred and sixty hours. And, uh, hopefully, he will be able to get them on the road sometime in August, sometime in early September. It is something that, when you're short, you wanna try to get them on the road, if you also don't wanna not have them paying properly, to give their liabilities, and take these, some, out there.
We want help in the home.
Obviously, without these, this staff, and the additional kinds of flights coming into the Augenburg International Airport, we're gonna be looking at, you know, time and no resources.
Well, like I said, we are, uh, down ten officers now.
Right.
Um, the airport addition, it really takes one officer, uh, all full, two all three with the hours dedicated to the airport. Uh, if you continue to stretch this grid, does, that would make it harder to staff that, or it's gonna be difficult in the long term to be able to, uh.
Gives you, I mean, it's a significant strain on your department, uh, just, the, the period being announced, I mean, what you have coming down the flight, and to workers' comp issues, uh, you know, anything coming down the flight, you've got nothing to fall back on.
Can't control injuries, and can't control workers' comp. The issue is, we're minimum staff, we don't drop loadings back, and why, certainly, for it's not, thank the officer, it's done years ago, it's never safe. Uh, that issue was depressed years ago, uh, the fault's on finding the airport, it's different, uh, classification, where an officer, technically, needs to go back up an officer on the road, they can continue to screen, and continue to employ. That's not the case anymore, the new classification of the airport, such that, our officers aren't there, they can't screen it. At the end of the day, with the Augenburg City Police Department, and our shifts are a priority, and we have to staff those first. And if I can't staff those, or they're stretched, and I'm overtime, it's gonna be awful hard to stop the airport. The guy, the woman versus the guy, they're always so much overtime, especially, they just can't work anymore. August Police Department to be involved, to be involved. But I don't know how we continue to do all the things that our department, with the resources we can give them.
Ultimately, blood safety comes first for the airport. I'll choose the airport as an example, I'm not looking to, to, I'm stressed out, there's, there's many issues here that need to be looked at, that, that simply weren't looked at, might be.
So, I know, uh, we're not leaving ten dollars five hundred per city, you know, twenty eight to two thousand people today, for operation twenty. How come you can't get, uh, two thousand more people, or take a twenty one percent percent? Um, our staff's got, like, fifteen thousand people, we have fourteen people. Can't just have forty eleven people, which is about, like, seven thousand people. Why do we have so many people? Can we not do something, business, schedules? I mean, they got, they got, they got shifts over the past year for one guy. Well, I would argue that working one ship, the village, one guy is, is a big help. Village, Rock, and also, I would tend to be, like, we're coming down with money, if everybody's coming down with money, we're, we're gonna be fast back and build that, or they have to cut back on state. You gotta do something. I, I, I don't want to fire them. I need, I need to take this job and, and then start hiring people, fighting people that, like, might, the country's gonna be there. It's not gonna happen, we're, now, we're just trying to move around, like, down the road, we're gonna be tough. And if the city goes bankrupt, or something happens, we're gonna, the village, everything's torn as well. Contact, everything's all, we all start threatening. And I don't, and I don't want that. You know why I don't want that? The guys that you, when you retire, old guys, they're losing a lot of their perks. People don't realize that. I, and I got a lot of friends on the police department, fire department, and I don't want people to lose their perks. I mean, they'll lose it, if the city goes bankrupt, or if the city happens to, uh, lose a village. We, we gotta work together, man. I mean, there's sometimes, there's seven feet off, and then seven feet off in the aviation. We don't need seven guys there in the aviation, unless you can prove to me that we, we have a real, kind of, on, 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 on ship. Well, I'll play a little, I, we do have administrative staff on duty, the chief of police will be kind of, I don't know, they have, they have positions, they have to use for the bill, they have the government gave staff, that also have to use for the bill. And you're mentioning perks, but those are benefits that, often, like, I've worked for, their entire, and I agree with them, when they retired them. I recall that as perk, I would call it a benefit, it was career, and I don't want people to, it is why. I'm just, I'm just here to scream. I realize that, I'm not, I'm not arguing, I think it's a better job, there's, I just, I just wanna make sure that, we're gonna hire more people, it's gotta be a way to get it down. I, I'm sorry, I, I understand, I understand your concerns, also, my understanding is those, that, that, um, I got, that's why I all the information from that. Um, I, I, I can get all these numbers from that, but, but the structure we have, the police department, on, for, we have different kinds of happening here, they're extremely busy, the department, very successful, we have high probability rate, and I think, um, after the job, uh, if you have, I'm just, I'm, speaking on top of issues, I'm simply here to, to, to be there, maybe impact on the department from the top. I realize that, all of you. I, I'm, and I'm the one that made the question, both the question, I personally think there's, there's too many people. I really do. And, and I'm probably able to talk to the people on the street, a lot of things, same way. But, you know, if you include me, somehow, I'll, I'll, I'll take my whole, go that way, and hire more guys, but I gotta have people. And I think some of the other guys here do, it, it, uh, uncoordinated. They're at fifty percent. You know, our, our financial, our financials are, are hurting every department in the city, and hurting our citizens. Situation we're in, and we do appreciate your hard, your hard work, and that's a small part of it. I wouldn't know that, so maybe we go to other. Anyone else here?
Thanks, thank you. Our next presentation will be regarding the fire chief position, and will be made by Jason Bouchard, president of I A S F Local seventeen ninety-nine.
You have one?
You have one.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear us?
Hello?
Hello?
Good evening, can anyone hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Good evening, members of city council, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of Augsburg. As, uh, Mr. Mayor said, my name is Jason Bouchard, I am the president of Local seventeen ninety-nine. Um, given some of the issues contained on tonight's agenda, my presentation has been trimmed considerably. However, as we have brought to citizen and council attention in previous meetings, our department has been without a fire chief since January twenty-first of this year. Our union has, and still strongly believes, that a permanently appointed, full-time chief is a necessity. A necessity not only in terms of our departmental function and operation, but for the overall safety of our great city and its citizens. With that being said, I will be available throughout the meeting if anyone has any questions regarding our union. I thank you for your time, and I hope for a progressive meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, uh, no public hearings tonight, and this brings us to public appearance. At this time, if you would like to address the council, please use the gray hand feature, the city clerk will recognize you, and I'll use one person at a time, you are fired.
They can't hear anything. Very important, people said they wanted to address this, and they jumped off, for the second meeting in a row. Nothing to hear.
No, nothing. No one? Okay. Uh, next we have our, our consent agenda, uh, the claim.
Yes. So, the person who has raised their hand and registered is Scott McRoberts, and I will unmute the officer, it looks like your line is open.
Good evening, council, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, this is going to be really brief, I just wanted to, everyone to be aware that people that are tuning in, um, via internet cannot hear any of the presenters. I know this was difficult last time as well, but before the next council meeting, if we could figure out another way, um, for us to be able to hear the presentations, and to get clear voices from the council members, that would be really helpful. Sorry, this is Angie McRoberts, not Scott, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll just point out that I've already asked for that, I thought it would be better at this meeting, and, uh, you know, we have to go to Zoom or something else, uh, you know, we really need to make sure our meetings are, are supposed to be live broadcast as well, and we should be working on that.
Yeah, yeah. Can, um, can we use an alternate location where the public could attend? Like, can we do this outside? Like, can we do this at an alternate location, so that way people can come and hear us? Like, socially distanced in the lawn chairs or something? It just seems like we keep talking about it and talking about it, but I don't know, is that something that can be done? Because now we should move a location and have microphones set up, and people can attend, like, I think people are really frustrated.
We, we've looked into that, and it's been a, and all these laws, we've, we've helped meetings, and, uh, by having meetings, we've ordered, and we've looked into outdoor venues, of course, you know, you're here, it's a, weather, and, and other factors as well.
I am hoping people lockwood, or, and at least people who wanted to speak, maybe we could put a speaker outside, people could even sit in their cars, broadcast a speaker outside, so at least it's all in the air, people could sit in their vehicles, the parking lot, put them on two different sides, if they wanted to speak, they could come in, I don't know, but you're trying to get, this is, we're getting so many complaints, just trying to help with some type of solution, if it would work, I don't know.
I'd have to look into that.
We do it at our party restaurant, I mean, people might tune in in their vehicle, if they could, they're, they're sitting in their own vehicles, I don't know.
Was, uh, the IT guy, run in and try to make this better?
He was, he was actually here, he was the one that came up with the suggestion with the left hand as the last name, so that everyone could see you in your first personal appearance. He's also the one that suggested that the line be run, um, so that the phone could be placed at the rear of the room, because that's where the speakers come get from. Um, the previous meeting, the audio was here, not me, everybody could hear me perfectly, as we went further around the room, the public had a public hearing, which is why the suggestion was made, for the audio to be placed at the back of the room, where the audio transferred now into the audience, in an effort to pick it up better for those who attend.
Maybe we could reach out to the county, maybe know the municipality that's not having these issues. We seem to be the problem children here.
There's nothing I would love more than this.
No, I'm just saying, this, this seems, this should be simple, with microphones and technology.
Well, certainly, absolutely.
And if we're allowed to have twenty-five, then we should say that as well, you know, if they can increase to ten, twenty-five, there is room for people to attend.
I agree, the council board, my understanding of open meetings law requirement is that we can't assume that anyone, the governor, the executive board does offer some like streaming, as you mentioned, they don't know if it's confidential, that they want to say homicide, maybe they can attend, and others cannot.
That's what the executive board is for.
You're absolutely right, I think they don't have that confidential. I also got a request that somebody would like to, they didn't hear anything that Ross said, they didn't know if he called in his presentation, because they couldn't hear any of it, and they wanted to hear, or at least maybe get a copy of that, because they couldn't hear it clearly.
Would it be admitted?
I can certainly add, add it to the minutes, if that's what everyone prefers. And I just had a request that they couldn't hear, and they don't, because they could hear Jason when he called in, loud and clear, so that, like, this was a question I would ask.
Is it video still?
Yes, there is.
Is it working? I mean, the actual?
We've been posting the, um, those webinar versions, because we, because if you have a better version, it's in the room, um, we can post about it.
So, I mean, you know, you, they may pick up one better than the other, one does the work, go to the side.
The microphone here and the microphone podium are tied directly into the video camera in the rear room, that records the meeting as it's taking place. The webinar software is tied into the audio from those calling in to participate, and with the deputy city clerk's phone in the rear room, that there's no direct tie-in to the audio in the room, and that's where we have the gathering.
Got to be both of them.
Absolutely, we can do that, that's not a problem.
Anyone have their hand raised, this, this being?
No.
Okay. Uh, next, uh, we have our consent agenda, uh, that, that's the claims as enumerated in general fund warrant number eleven dash twenty twenty, in the amount of four hundred sixty-three thousand eight hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. And library warrant number eleven dash twenty twenty, in the amount of eight thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars and forty-eight cents. And capital fund warrant number eleven dash twenty twenty, in the amount of one hundred twenty-five thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars. And community development fund warrant number eleven dash twenty twenty, in the amount of zero dollars. The community renewal fund warrant number eleven dash twenty twenty, in the amount of zero dollars, as audited, be and same hereby are ordered paid. I don't, city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Compteur Millibot?
Yes.
Compteur Fisher?
Yes.
Compteur Kennedy?
Yes.
Compteur Power?
Yes.
Compteur Reed?
Yes.
Compteur Scandery?
Yes.
Upright.
Uh, we have an appointment tonight, I will make a motion to appoint John St. Joseph to fulfill, uh, the remainder of Linda Pellet's term on, on the claiming board, term to begin June twenty-second, twenty twenty, and end December thirty-first, twenty twenty. I don't move. Sorry. City clerk, please call the roll.
Compteur Power?
Yes.
Compteur Reed?
Yes.
Compteur Scandery?
Yes.
Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Compteur Millibot?
Yes.
Compteur Fisher?
Yes.
Compteur Kennedy?
Yes.
Upright.
And this brings us to items for council action. Our first item of business is a resolution approving a one-year extension of agreement between the city of Augsburg and St. Lawrence County in relation to the allocation and distribution of money collected from the sale tax and compensa, compensations, compensating used taxes imposed pursuant to Article twenty-eight and twenty-nine of the tax law, which was tabled at the June eighth, twenty twenty, city council meeting. I'll move it. Um, I'd like to say, uh, we still have the problem of the date, uh, September first, twenty twenty, to move it in Congress. I, uh, spoke to Chairman Joe Langford twice this week, and he had concerns of moving it to September first, twenty twenty-one, and it was late in process, and so I said, maybe we could do July first, twenty twenty-one, we should know by then how negotiations are going, or if we would want to preempt, and maybe that could be considered of changing that date to July first, twenty twenty-one. What do you say when you, that, that, he was bringing it to the committee, and legislators have all gone, which they're probably in the process of doing that right now, so, they will, they will do what they do.
So, I thought that the attorney said it was an understanding that we could still negotiate, because states and the, and the last motion, that's the whole purpose, or the extent, the whole purpose was to extend the agreement to give us time to negotiate. So, I thought, hopefully, it's agreed, that the language is sound, we still have a, we can negotiate.
Well, there's, uh, issues, uh, John, uh, called the, uh, the state comptroller, and I believe we were told that there shouldn't be a problem, because the county and the state both proved that, state did not approve that, we did not approve that. They were sent it, they saw it, the- We should know by then how negotiations are going, or if we would want to preempt. And maybe that could be considered of changing that date to July 1, 2021. What do you say when you said that? He was bringing it to the committee and legislators to vote on, which they're probably in the process of doing that right now. So we would be, they would, they would do what they do.
So I thought that the attorney said it was an understanding that we could still negotiate. Because states in the, in the last motion, that's the whole purpose, probably the extent of it. Whole purpose was to extend the agreement to give us time to negotiate. So I thought, hopefully, it's agreed, that the language was sound, we still have a, we have a negotiating.
Well, there's, uh, issues. Uh, John, uh, called the, uh, the State Controller, and I believe we were told that there shouldn't be a problem, because the county and the state both approved it. State did not approve it, we did not approve it. They were sent it, they saw it, the, uh, September 1, 2020. Um, they were concerned about it also. Then, uh, I'm speaking to Scott Goldie. He said, well, the county could take us to court, but likely they wouldn't win. So that's when I called Joe Lightfoot, we told him of our concern. And I'm hoping that the, the county will change that date.
What did the State Controller say?
Just when he related, uh.
The, the only part of the extension, Mr. Goldie, men's last meeting, was just to extend the negotiation. There's nothing in there to litigate, because we have to agree to anything down, but it ended anytime soon. This is an extension of the sale tax agreement. All this is, is to give us a little more time, and I believe the reason why the county did it, according to Mr. Goldie, was based off the COVID that happened, that pandemic, and, and other fiscal issues that are addressed throughout the entire state regarding sale tax. If your Controller's office, as far as I'm concerned, and what I've gathered, is genuinely concerned over sales tax, Tim, feel free to jump in if you want, but the only concern I've seen out of the Controller's office is the overall sale tax coming in throughout the whole entire state due to the pandemic. I reached out to the Controller's office, I've not moved it, because I don't see the, I don't see the issue here. This just gives us more time to negotiate a successor agreement, and if we choose not to, then we choose not to.
If, if they're gonna negotiate for, in the next year, and we're both, we're gonna ask for data for the separation of the city and the county, uh, not to be collected as a whole, but to separate the city and county to see how much sale tax comes in from the city and how much comes in from the county for next year, and our negotiations will both have numbers. So we won't be negotiating on emotions, or we think something might happen, or we think the city has less sale tax or less population. So why would we have to notify the county September of this year? It's, it's, that language is built from this problem. Right, but we have to notify them of our intent of September 1 this year. So if we're extending negotiations next year, you would extend a pattern and notify them for next year, and not have to notify them this year. But they're not extending the date that we have to notify them by. And that's all we're asking, is just to change the September 1, 2020 to September 1, 2021. But if they feel like that's a little out, out far with the, if we should separate November, then let's make it July 1 of next year. But to notify them this year of our intent, we don't know our intent, because we don't have the data to tell them our intent.
I believe that, I don't.
Nor do we have the authority to, uh, preempt. We have to go to the.
Yes.
The, uh, the assembly and get a, that.
That's a question, and that won't happen from their place, like a session ending.
That's why we're saying we need more time to notify you. You're extending the agreement a year, we appreciate that very much. But in the agreement, you need to extend the notification date so that we have time to do what we need to do to prepare. We would rather have a continuation agreement, not our, not our wish to preempt. We don't know what that is, like Mike said.
Okay.
But we, we have to, we have to be prepared to do our due diligence, and, and we need time to do that before we can notify you. So the notification needs to be extended. I don't see why September 1 is a problem that wasn't.
Let's say a session will go.
Yeah.
If I get July 1st, so let's say a session in next year.
Yes.
Yes, it will.
So. But, uh, you know, maybe that date is still coming in, maybe we're still working hard to try and negotiate flows.
So you're, you're, you want more of a back finding, you know, I think you and I can both attest to the fact that getting those numbers, those operation numbers, the tax alignment that's all in, you know, miracle.
The towns and the villages to see it thoroughly. But yet, they, that argument is used. The towns and the villages have also decreased the population also.
The order of the county go to July here?
We just want, so there's a statement in here in this contract. Okay? It's just highlighted. So when you go to the contract itself, okay? Second page, there's a big long paragraph under number three. And it says, uh, then a renegotiated agreement or other such agreement is not reached on before September first, 2020. Then the city may notify the county pursuant thereto. So we're trying to get that changed to 2021.
Yeah.
The attorney, when he commented on this last week, if you remember, he pointed out the word "may", and he said, instead of "shall", he said it means nothing. And, and so he said, and, and then his negotiation, I thought with the county attorney, that there wasn't a need for that language change because there was nothing, nothing grounded here.
He, he continues to negotiate. He has since said that there is a possibility that the county could take it to court for breach. They would likely lose, but it, and it's also a bigger issue. We, the city and county are gonna have to work good faith forever. And we've, we got a big issue of distributing, distribution of our sales tax. So both parties need to be comfortable. Right now, I don't know about everyone, but I'm not comfortable with this situation. And if, if you can't, for, if they do not, um, consider our point, then it basically right now would be, hey, we're gonna do one year extension, and you're gonna accept it the way it is, even though you have to. So going forward, this would be both, good for both parties, to make this small concession to move forward and negotiate in good faith on the sales tax, and then in the future on all the things that we're gonna deal together. So I would hope that they'll think about this and understand our position. I think they will. And so I guess it's, do we table it? Or do we try to make it through July first, and then we'll table it?
I think it's very significant, too, that the attorney at the comptroller's office also raised the same issue. Um, you know, so it, it kind of weakens our position that if you're gonna extend it for a year, you need to extend the, negotiate the notification date by a year as well. That only makes sense.
And that was not shared with us.
Yeah.
So you reached out and contacted?
I didn't even know that.
It really was the current, of course, the date. There's, there's, I mean, why, what's the underlying reason for pushing against it? Why would they not want? Tell me.
Yeah.
What would be the big deal if it's just?
Yeah, I don't understand that. You know, if they're, if they're gonna extend the agreement under the purpose of giving this time to renegotiate, then why wouldn't they change it? That's, that's the whole, I, I just don't understand why they would.
So I, I, I just, I think it's important to just believe he's, I believe, and that's what Scott emailed that earlier. Or email that I don't know. But mayor's had conversations with, uh, the, the chair, and, you know, if we can come up something else, and, and did an agreement by July, let's see what they got to say. They got nothing to lose here. So I get, I'm getting the sense that it's the consensus of the council that we're very grateful that they extended this and we're appreciative of the county legislature for agreeing to do that. It's also the consensus of the council that that one date needs to be changed to September first of 2020, or at least July one, 2021, to correct myself. Uh, and we would like to convey that, I, I guess we have, uh, to the county. But they're bringing it back to discuss next?
They, they, they are, or when I was in the next meeting, right now, they're, they're really not right now.
So that's the consensus? Is that the consensus that we're moving?
Just to table this again?
Yeah. Well, and, and that our position on it is that they should extend the notification date.
I'd like to see the date changed. If, if, if they actually refuse, then I think we have no choice but to accept this. And it's just the attorney's position that, that word "may" really is, is just arbitrary. That, that's what I think. I got no problem table on this another, till the next meeting, or whatever.
Just see with the council, county inspector.
I, I think, uh, if they don't, aren't willing to negotiate that small change, um, I think it would be unfortunate, um, you know, because I think, uh, it would, it hurts our relationship. We got a lot of big issues to work together. So we are gonna leave it table?
Well, actually, we have the resolution.
We have a motion to take it off the table.
We gotta table it. So, Dan?
So I'll make a motion to table it.
I'll second. Table it, till the next one.
How's that, what's taken off the table? So we have a motion, second, to take it off the table. So if you'd like, I can call both of that, and because we voted down, and it goes off the table.
Okay, right.
We haven't, I don't think we haven't had a motion.
Point Powers, motion, attorney, uh?
Yeah, we moved, we moved the resolution.
Provided, however, that out of title pay may be authorized and approved for more than forty hours than one week in the event of an emergency that requires additional hours.
Second, is there any discussion?
Well, I think it's costing us more money not to not to do this. As Jason Bouchard said, we need a party to help make safety in City Box. So I'm going to support this.
Would we, uh, we need, we needed to give some sort of notice or St. Mark's County Civil Service. Can you just do that automatically? We don't need to throw time to it. Just send them a letter or something.
Um, I did look at the resolution for that language, but I did have an opportunity to speak today directly with civil service. They have requested this exam be given. They made that request in New York State in April of twenty twenty. New York State has not set the exam date. The exam was last given by New York State in December of nineteen, so will probably again be December of twenty. But they have already made the request.
Yeah, we were aware of that. We just wanted to be officially on record and point out that we do want to hire fire chiefs and, uh, you know, so we wanted to make the official request, or should have done it a while ago. And can you convey that without amending the resolution with me?
That's fine. I told them this. They're aware of this resolution, so why they called me this morning. I told them I was quite confident it would pass and I would be instructed to send a copy to them, but that I acknowledged that they have already called for the exam. So no problem. I'm happy to send a certified copy to the county. Thank you.
Any further discussion with, uh, any clerk please call the roll?
Hunter Reed.
Yes.
Hunter Scantling.
Yes.
Derek Scally.
Yes.
Hunter Delabot.
Yes.
Hunter Fisher.
Yes.
Hunter Kennedy.
Yes.
Hunter Powers.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business is a resolution to establish working rules between the city council and the city attorney. Would a member of council like to interject?
I will. A resolution to establish working rules between the city council and the city attorney. Whereas the city council desires to establish a policy for the proper working relationship between the council and the city attorney. And whereas the city council wishes to be transparent in regard to legal opinions received from the city attorney in regard to official city business and city policy. But also recognizes the sensitive nature of some of the communications between council and the city attorney. Now therefore be resolved that the following working rules are hereby established to govern communications between council and the city attorney. Should a council, a counselor require legal advice from the city attorney in regard to city business, the counselor may request such opinion or advice as long as the member of the council has a consensus from at least three other members. Consensus can be achieved by any means, any reasonable means. If the inquiry results in legal opinion, it shall be shared with the balance of the council as soon as is reasonably possible. Provided, however, that such legal opinion shall only be shared in executive session under section one oh eight of Public Officers' Law. When such a legal opinion is shared with the full council in executive session, the majority of council shall decide to what extent, if any, to waive the attorney client privilege in making such opinion public. I so move.
I'll add that. Uh, discussion? So if one counselor, according to this resolution, asks for a legal opinion, the attorney is not going to give it. I want three more come please. Also ask for it. Is that correct?
Correct. What's changed? He asked for direction. He gave his direction. Well, he's, he was an Asian. And.
This was not his recommendation.
No.
I don't feel this is transparent at all.
Only we do.
I think, I, I don't understand why everything has to be in executive session. It is that what this thing tells another question. Because quite often we've asked the attorney questions, sometimes in section three or sometimes four. This looks like everything is going to be answered in executive session. And my other concern is that does this violate open meetings law? Because now you have to have four counselors basically having, having a meeting discussing a legal debate. So.
And, and, and under the section one oh eight three of the Public Officer's Law, any matter made confidential by a federal state law, which attorney-client privilege is, and that's what it is, every one of his things that come back say right on him is attorney-client privilege. So I didn't write the exception to the Public Officer's Law, but it exists.
I just think it's just an exemption under section one oh eight number three. It's just an exemption, meaning that if the subject line suggests that it's confidential, then it's confidential.
No, it allows you.
That is a lot of executive session where action is taken.
No, it allows you to get into executive session.
That's your interpretation. That's not how I read section one oh eight at all. Mr. Gold, you made it very clear that me as the counsel are the client. And I being one of seven am a client and I'm entitled to information through open government and to attorney. Now, if this is how you choose to vote, that's fine. You can expect problems down the road.
Yeah, I think it's very open. I think it's very transparent.
Is it really? You do, do we really want to get into that? Is it really that open?
To express your opinion, I express mine.
Interesting.
All right, no one, I'll just, I'll take it. I'll take it. We, uh, we worked out what I think is, uh, you know, your, um, a good procedure. And you force legal opinion.
What's changed? That's what I asked. I got a swing back.
And, and everything, and everything will be shared with everybody with a check that, uh, you know, it goes into executive session and we want to share if something important, we share publicly. We can vote publicly and share. If you want to do that, that's fine, but, um, I, I think it's a good resolution.
If I can. I'm just going to cite a quote to personal appearance during online presentations in, in city councils where constituents can voice their concerns consistently, not just one person. And when we look to go and move that information, and I can't get three yet, oh, two weeks ago in this very chamber, you all would know that you got information based off three counselors and then ultimately a fourth chimed in. I am on the record and you have all seen it, asking for information and have not got it. And I had three counselors asking for it. What's changed? Nothing. So the transparency level doesn't exist. If this is how you want to roll, have that.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I don't see, I just don't see any transparency whatsoever. I'm certainly not going to vote for this.
Does this include personal emails as well? Done with city, done with city business? City business, city business, is, is, is personal email relevant here? Legal opinion? I'm asking a question and it's directly related to the subject matter. Information being received is a council of all. To legal opinion.
Legal opinion.
Okay.
So the city attorney was in a, a agreement that this is not the way to roll. That the way to roll is if somebody asks a question, be answered to all of us. Period. And that's what he stated at the last meeting. So I'm voting against it. I, I think even the city attorney, it knows this is wrong and obviously it does, and he's probably going to get in trouble. I, I don't know. I don't know why you'd want to do that.
I vote, I vote no on it, um, just for the simple fact that if we cannot share information, we're never going to be able to work together. And I'm getting real sick of it. It's, it's like high school kids trying to figure out who wants to be the popular kid at the lunch table. Like there's no working together and that's the problem. Working together is going to come from the sharing of information and the ability to trust one another. If I can't trust that I can call Steve on the phone and ask him something that I'm going to give the truth, I will. What was told? I can't work with Steve. Same thing goes with John. Same thing goes with Dan. Like there's no trust and this to me seems like you're trying to lock the clock out unless it's your idea and you want to present it. I, I, I prefer the legal opinion that we got from our attorney that said it shouldn't go out to all of us. And that's where I stand. So I will vote no.
Yeah, you know, if, if you, you can vote, we all get one vote. But we sat here two weeks ago. The man gave us this thing. He asked for direction. We've had two weeks to come up with some type of resolution, some type of idea of how it should be done, how we should do it. Man sat there and asked, and we sit here tonight and this is put out because of the time to do it. But yet, nothing. Don't like it. Where's yours?
I was more than happy to make the compromise.
There was always one way to change. There was one way, one government. What do you mean? This is, we don't need a resolution to be able to move the city forward as a entity? That's absurd.
The man's requesting.
And you brought an idea that I.
And he gave his opinion and it's in, and in an operational standpoint, he sat right there, right there and said, I just assume share information with the whole. I'll pull the minutes up. I'll check the minutes if we have to put the minutes into the record again. I don't know why we'd have to do that. Because the city charter says by attorney, and he was interpreting it, right?
Exactly.
It's exactly what he was coming off and that's what we should be operating off. You want to change the charter, convene the commission, put your issues forward and govern by the eye. Do whatever you want.
I mean, this is not a charter.
What's changed? I didn't say what the charter changed. I was suggesting that if that's the avenue you want to go, those are the necessary steps you need to take to do it legally. Period.
My man. We're not doing changes to charter. This is not a charter change. This was, uh, a request by the lawyer for guidance. And we've given it to him in this resolution and we'll vote on it if it passed. And all information will be given to everyone. That was the object of it and it will be given to everyone. Um, and anyone else would like to speak? So.
So I think it's just a matter of, uh, either, either you're going to vote for secrecy, which is what this is, or vote for transparency. I'm going to vote no on secrecy.
I would strongly disagree with Mr. Campero's comments. It's very transparent. Can't be more transparent in putting in a resolution with agreeing to share it with everybody but protecting that information since it is, you know, very, uh, confidential information. Like, you know, some of the things that we talked about, I can't even mention it. Uh, and so that's why that's in there, but you're all part of it. You can all go in the executive session together all seven of us. So you'll have all the information. And if you want to make it public, you just vote on it to make it public. So I, I. I think they could follow them and they move to executive session. I don't think your opinion.
With everybody's opinion, instead of having four, we have three. So that way I feel, and then I am locked out from contacting the city attorney.
It'll be shared with all. What's the problem?
And still share with all, but.
Whether it's one or three or two or five or six or whatever.
Changing it from four to three. So that way we all have the same opportunity. What about that? Does that, does anybody against that? Why do we have to necessarily have four? Why can't it be three? So we all.
Same with everything else that we vote on.
But if we're creating, but if we are creating the working rules, why can't we make up the rules? So we're creating the rules. So why can't we create the rule that says one counselor and two additional counselors? I don't see why it has to be the fourth. So that way we can all have that opportunity. Because I have asked many times questions and could not get a fourth. And I feel like that blocks me out from being able to get answers for people, things that people ask me. And I feel like I'm failing to do my job because I can't get those answers. And we have it in writing multiple times where I've been asked at a council meeting and been head cricket. I've asked an email for a fourth and had nobody. Like I just think that can we change it from needing a majority to at least three? And change the wording to at least three counselors?
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Why do you feel uncomfortable with calling Bill or I or John or Steve? You've never called one of us to ask for the fourth. We have to talk.
I prefer to always put things in writing in an email. That way, sometimes I'm not a counselor. I've always conducted businesses in writing. I always start every email one, so I always, my preferences, I put it in writing. We all check our email. We all respond to emails. So that's why I put it in writing.
Okay. Sometimes to articulate, uh, what we're working on or, or a plan or an objective, a conversation is just better because then it leads to, you know, you say, I have, like, there's two things that could be improved with code right now. You say, I have a plan for some ideas. I'm working with code. I'd like to take these to the lawyer. And it's like, okay. And then maybe I say, well, what is the plan? And we talk about it. I love it. Love it. That's a great effort. And it goes forth. That is how we've approached the work of the sales pack. And there's some other things we're working on that just really can't, uh, be openly.
So my issue doesn't lie in something like that. My issue lies when we are separate and of an argument. You are firmly, when talking about when we did the class, you were firmly at one end of that and I'm still firmly at the other end of that. During that meeting, I asked for a opinion and I was very verbal about what I would like to see and to get an opinion from the attorney. And you're telling me that if I would verbally call you, I verbally asked in a meeting and I still couldn't get it. So that's all I'm saying is like, I think if we can change the wording to at the request of at least three counselors, that doesn't block anyone else.
My man, to say, I want to use the attorney because I'm opposed to the majority?
No, I just wanted to seek opinion on if what was being done was legal or if we could do it. But you guys had already talked to the attorney and that's why the changes were probably made to the layoffs in the fire department because you knew we couldn't. So that's what I'm saying. You contacted the attorney on those issues. And that's what I'm saying. I just wanted to be able to ask questions, but at the time, didn't know you had spoken to him and I wasn't shared that information. So that was the problem. I was all I'm saying is, I think it's great that Steve wrote this. So if it's up for negotiation, I would just like to amend it to make it at least three. And that way every person sitting here on this council has the opportunity, whether, I don't agree. Before this council, I would not always have a say. I voted against Dan. I voted against Mike multiple times. You can go back and check the record. We disagreed quite a few times about things. So it's not that I'm locked in. It's the fact that I just think of at least three counselors. You could be my third counselor. They don't always agree with me. I'm just saying, I think at least three makes it so we can actively work for the people that voted us into office. And that's my suggestion. If we're, like Steve said, nobody offers suggestions, that's fine.
My, my suggestion would be let's start talking more. Let's just call each other, ask each other to share the information personally. I, I've called you and I've called Dan.
Right, but back to my issue on it's impossible to work with people when you don't trust them. So that's all I'm saying is, is that if we can make it at least three, I think we could prove to maybe have a better working relationship with everyone involved. And that's all I'm saying.
So I will second Nicole's amendment to make it, uh, and now therefore be resolved. Second paragraph, as long as a member of council has a consensus from at least two other members, consensus can be achieved by any reason. I mean, we're, you know, here, here we are talking about working together and making home calls and doing this back. And, you know, ultimately that's what got us here. When we started to request this, what we got back were responses were, well, it's worth three now, live with it.
I don't, I disagree.
Well, it's on record, Mike. You know, it's all recorded, recorded, right, right here in this chamber. I'm not going to.
I agree.
But, you know, that's irrelevant. But, but that's, that's the reason why we're, we're concerned about. You know, and, and it's not, you know, I, I think, I mean, I'm not going to sit here and say that anybody has any follow-up intentions to the city. I know that's not to be true. But going forward, I'll be back for information and we have the door shut not on. I have the city attorney respond to me, tell to me, such. Send your email. Emails that I've shared with everybody. To obtain and share information and fact finding as we go forward. That's how I've always operated, how Dan's always operated. I've only served with Nicole Green period here, but that seems to be the way she's operated. And that's all we're trying to achieve here. This isn't rocket science and that doesn't need a resolution. It just needs to be a common goal of all seven of us to move the city forward collectively. And fact finding and being informed as a legislator is serving your constituency. That's what government's all about. It's really that simple. You don't need a resolution to do this to go forward. It's kind of that.
May I say, as hard as fact finding, there's been four people who have been all fact finding.
There's been four people that have been speaking for other people. You can't say the other three aren't like. No, you're speaking on my behalf. You're telling me that I'm not, that I'm not doing my due diligence. My own.
I've spoken. Be respectful and wait your turn. There's been four people who have been working fact finding.
I tried to fact find, but I couldn't get any answers from the lawyer.
I'm, what specifically? Share with us.
We're in order here. We're in order. We're not here to debate personal appearances or anything of that nature. This, this, this is how a meeting should be conducted. Follow. I vote. Call the roll and Dan, and then all vote together.
Okay. We're voting on amendment to the resolution. Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Two of them.
Correct.
Hunter Scantling.
Yes.
Derek Scally.
No.
Hunter Delabot.
No.
Hunter Fisher.
No.
Hunter Kennedy.
Yes.
Hunter Powers.
Yes.
Hunter Reed.
No.
Yeah.
Now, would the city board please call the roll?
Derek Scally.
Yes.
Hunter Delabot.
Yes.
Hunter Fisher.
Yes.
Hunter Kennedy.
No.
Hunter Powers.
No.
Hunter Reed.
Yes.
Hunter Scantling.
No.
Approved.
Our next item of business is a resolution to provide a public notice, a public hearing with regard to a local law to amend the city charter in regard to a residency requirement for the positions of the chief of police and fire chief. Would a member of council, I think.
I can do that. Be resolved that a public hearing be held by the August 14th, 2020, that's definitely on the city council chambers, city hall. And be in further resolved that the city clerk could notice such public hearing by publication in the official newspaper at least seven days before the hearing date, setting forth the time and place prescribing the proposed local law in summary form. So move.
Thank you.
Second? So I'm looking at this and it basically says that the police chief and the fire chief not be a resident of the city. And I think this is already state law, isn't it? Because we've had discussion on hiring people and, and having to make them residents of the city. But I think if you're a member of the police or fire, you do not have to be a resident. You have to live in county, but not be a city. It's state law.
We've gotten this about a hundred times. I, I did.
Department head came back.
Just, I just think police or fire, I don't think it has that to do with the department. Who brought this forward? Why? What's, what's the issue?
Um, because we want to make sure that, uh, two important city employees, uh, one, the chief of police, the other fire chief, that they reside in the city, especially given the emergency nature of their service. Same thing, it is in charter for the city manager. It's written the exact same way.
But this says that the chief of police need not be a resident.
But you got to finish reading it because it says at the time, while you're serving, you do. But the point is we, we will recruit from outside the city, if that's, that's what that means. But one day, if we pick you, you need to reside in the city.
I'll reside in the city. So I don't, I think there's an issue with state law here.
There's not an issue with state law and, uh, the Supreme Board is upheld with, um, even other communities like Syracuse do it for their entire departments. Uh, and, um, I think it's a good change.
I, I got no problem with it. I, I, I just think it's, I think it's against the law. And can we go check on that? So.
Yeah, uh, the city attorney is looking into that and has provided him with, and I believe I did also provide the council um, New York State Public Officer's Law, Article two, that pertains to the police chief as well as, um, the fire chief. Um, and so we have, as I think it was your counselors, can really note that, that the city has tried to have a residency requirement for these positions in the past and it's becoming a fact that is not lawful. So the attorney is looking into the information that we have provided, and as well as New York State law.
And I think it was the city of Syracuse that had the lawsuit. I'm quite certain, uh, because like I said, we've been over this, over and over and over again. I'd like to table this to be here in that.
I'll play it.
Further discussion?
I don't want to vote yes or no. Let's, let's, let's table this.
I'd like to call for a public hearing. I'd like to call for a public hearing and anytime, uh, Andrea starts with the attorney and we'll have that information.
Oh, you're going for a public hearing?
Yeah.
I mean, I'd like to think that person that would be, uh, one of those department heads would, uh, like the women are shaping the closure of the community. So I'm intuitively voting for it.
I just want to check the law.
What Dan is saying, they don't have, they don't need a residence to be pointed.
No, no, I don't think.
Then they got to move your after the point.
Well, I'm, I'm sure there's already a lawsuit and then that. This is because we've often in the past tried to make every city employee a resident of the city. And we can't do it, we, we could do it to some degree. But we couldn't do it because you can't do it for fire and police. And if we couldn't do it to fire and police, we didn't think it was fair to do it to residents. So that's why I've never passed, uh, probably ever changed council, I said, I'm just trying to put this up. And every time the attorney says you can't do it if you get the law. So.
I, I think you're using different language. There isn't a law that prohibits that, uh, you know, there may be like case law or some different, uh, case law. But, uh, it's, we, we already do it for the manager.
So why don't we, uh, why don't we table this and ask the attorney, if we can get four of us to agree, to, uh, actually draw up a resolution that, that he thinks is legal. Because I, I don't think that, I think it is legal and I think Andrea is getting a legal opinion. And I think we should call for a public hearing and, and it, and by that time they will have that opinion.
How quickly can we get into a public hearing? I'll wait until the night of the hearing.
You got a decision back from the city attorney that was favorable? You got a decision back from the city attorney that was favorable to the resolution?
Kathy, I can ask you to figure out the standpoint of the public hearing, but ultimately, if you have a public hearing, you don't have a requirement to go forward with the resolution. So if it's determined, uh, by the attorney, that you cannot require a residency requirement for either of those positions, um, then you can go forward with withholding the public hearing. Uh, you can get public comment, but you wouldn't be able to pass that review, and in fact, the attorney came back and said it was not lawful. So I, I, I have talked to the attorney who had not, that had commented with this resolution before, um, the council received the agenda on Thursday, uh, and at the same time, he saw the difference of the current resolution, and he did ask for time to review it for, for, to determine whether or not it was legal, um, but he can provide a new lit, kind of heading on that. I have no issue with calling for a public hearing. There's already not moving forward that, uh, the attorney will have an opinion to report to public hearing.
Okay. I'll take, I'll take the law.
Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Compton Dillop?
Yes.
Compton Fisher?
Yes.
Compton Kennedy?
Yes.
Compton Powers?
Yes.
Compton Reed?
Yes.
Compton Scampoli?
Yes.
Mary Scally?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Public Works, Shane Brown.
Well, this is a resolution, all right, we spend here a bunch of time with this. On, this is five, this is about a whole day, like, here, this is for, uh, five days, a week, six hours a day. So make sure everybody understands that. Uh, this is in there for five days, like, I don't know, rounds, fifty rounds. You made it so we can just get through the number, the door, like, morning program, that, that, that is the number that, uh, we know.
Captain, you were, we, we moved this, we, so I'll move this off, uh, sorry, I can't, I can't, no.
Only in the sixty, like? Yeah, because you told us, you, you told us on Monday, you know, you told us back today, right, with the title people. Plus the ninety three. Well, that's, that's, you guys, how much you want to do, it's part of that. I, it's, it's, I, I don't, it's, it's short, summer's short. Not for that whole, that's a day. This involves, you know, the department health, you know, giving activation, and, you know, approving the full plan and stuff like that.
Be that some council that they do want to be conservative with the managers. And that this department of public works has also awarded duties of their mark traditionally and obviously doing. So we're trying to, this is the first time for public works to operate the pool. So we feel like the budget that was proposed, six days a week, sorry, five days a week, six hours a day, is achievable with the staffing that we have in the department and the applications and the responses that we've received from lifeguards, as well as it still doesn't allow us to provide some cost saving measures for the city.
All right. I talked to Penny Sherrill today and she said that she would be interested in helping the random pools for programs. I think we should consider Penny and having her bring other people on as a, with a hand with a siphon. I think this should be increased to fifty-five thousand dollars. I think we've all, especially our children, have been through a lot, no school. I think we should increase this and look for businesses and individual citizens who would consider contributing. Pepsi-Cola is, I think you know, going to contribute again. And I think if we move it up to fifty-five thousand, I think we'd probably get five, ten thousand dollars from donations to put our rec programs and let's say, I mentioned Penny, is a good individual for this. And hopefully the fifty-five thousand will be donations to the city to help with this. We'll get maybe ten thousand back of it. But we need to put on a good program for our children and lift the spirits of the city quality of life. That would be my recommendation on this to increase.
Well, I would like to raise this and then I can bring the donations in that will hopefully offset.
I think we could save thirty-five hundred dollars a month by turning active emergency and that money could be used as resources for.
With the standpoint, I think we could save that money by the fire department saying, let's do this for our children and doing it for nothing. Anyway, we're back on this motion and.
Second to the amendment.
Any further discussion?
I'm not against that, I just want to make sure I understand fully where it comes from because the cuts were drastic, like just want to make sure I understand completely if residual ramifications of it, that's all. So the entire, the entire pool budget was cut as a result of the passing of the major project, which is sixty-two thousand dollars, sixty-two thousand two hundred and seventy. That entire budget was cut with the passing of the revolution. So a resolution in some ways a reform, so all the preventive and using is needed to eventually restore funding to allow the pool to open. I don't know if that answers your question or if you want something more detailed from the council.
So your thirty thousand estimate is based on the savings, the pool had opened earlier and then what your stuff like calculated with it?
We've based it on a decrease in the number of overall lifeguards and a loss of one day.
What's the budget?
Yeah, the hours are shortened up, there's no morning programs, there's like no night swim for adults, stuff like that.
It's only public swimming, so there's no swim lessons, there's no adult swim, it would be public swim only.
Part of the original approach for the school opening, in early twenty-fifth?
They could use the old, maybe last week or last, I think we're about a week behind.
You usually open with a call.
Yeah, we're about a week behind.
They would open the very last week of school, they had, I believe they had classes coming for school, kind of parties and weird things, but it opened to the public, actually, so we're about a week, two weeks behind where it was, had opened four days.
I.
I'm sure they want to go higher.
I'm good with restoring the.
I, I know, but that's what they need. I just, I would like to see, I would like to see it restored for, for the kids to have, you know, back to normally six days a week. I, I, you know, I, I'm certain citizens and businesses will help us with some of this. And I'd like to go with fifty-five thousand. And we've made a lot of cuts and.
Does that cover the pool or does it cover the additional program?
Uh, well.
Yeah, I know additional program.
We can't have it.
Public service.
No swim lessons, no night swim.
Oh, okay. This is thirty-five thousand a year distributed to the pool.
He's not amending, he's not amending anything else in the, in the resolution other than bottom line.
I, I think fifty-five thousand could be like a couple of pound cords, like just a little bit like.
You're gonna need them if you're ready to regulate, you're gonna need, you're gonna need, you can't have groups of eight or ten without actually having somebody bet on it. And once, you know, we're, we're, we're one group, let's say we're one group and John runs off and goes and runs off with another group, before you know it, now we got a problem. You know, you've got this individual that's gotta run over and address that. So you're paying an actual resource instead of just a plain light card, you know? I mean, the requirement's called quite a bit, you have to cope with it, right? You know, and I think the additional funding will help with that.
And then, okay, call the question, could we ready to, uh, hold on to the amendment to raise it to fifty-five thousand?
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Mary Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Dillabow?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Not with any hurdles.
Oh, Ed, Ed.
Counselor Kennedy?
Ed, Ed.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor.
This brings us to the whole business, then one has any whole business discussed?
So under old business, you know, police chief gave the court presentation tonight, or actually police chief. She didn't go to court presentation tonight. I seriously think we need to address the issue. If we can't get, I mean, he's down ten percent, thirty-five or thirty-six percent. And so I, I seriously think we need to address the issue and I think we need to at least put two police officers back on the, okay? And I'd like to have a discussion on this. I mean, I don't want to lose the airport. I like the fact that drugs, the drug situation, I'm at least part of the, doing a tactical job, trying to clean up the city with that situation. Our SRI, our SRO being a teacher, I see the incredible importance of having a SRO in the school system with the children. And I think at the next meeting, I'd like to see a resolution on hiring two more police officers for arrest, especially if we got two coming out of the UTE that are gonna be running, we're bringing around, that'd be paid for a while. Rather than waste it, I'd like to, I know, I know, I take your, your words to heart bill, you know, about the budget and everything, and, but I seriously think that the city needs to do something here and we're way too short. I think there would need to be.
Twenty-eight.
And it's, it's just gonna create a forced overtime situation, or we take advantage of the airport and stuff like that. I don't, what do you guys think?
Well, yeah, and you've got a lot of other good points too, you know, you have the bail reform that passed this year, you know, I mean, you got, we, we just had an individual charged, you know, allegedly charged for breaking, and then turned around and violated. I mean, these are the things that by law enforcement down and our fire department as well, when you look at the cuts that are made there, when you look at the pandemic and the meth situation that we have and the drugs in the city, laws and, and some of the crime in the city. You know, it, it, it can't be taken lightly and, and I'm not suggesting that for, but it can't be taken lightly and, you know, we have to put the public safety at, at the end here. And, you know, I, I'm familiar with staffing levels through my expectations and, you know, it hurts and, and that's why I suggest, you know, I worry about burnout and you're gonna, you know, you got summer coming, the heat here, you know, we're dealing with it sitting there, you know, and, and those, those have factors into the daily grind and I'm in full support of providing public safety and not making any cuts there. I know the cuts need to be made in other areas, we need to find them, but public safety can't be stopped.
Okay, can I bring this to new business?
I know we're looking at cost saving measures and I need to even bring this up, but we always do summer cleanup for relay festival. I would just like to see what the cost savings is, not saying I want to get rid of it, but what is the cost savings of now? I just want to know the numbers, okay?
I don't have any exact number, but you know, probably two weeks, at least three, three guys per day. I mean, we're looking at city right now, if we lose the one code officer, there's a lot of brush off.
Lot of brush off.
There's a lot. I, I would go with, I do understand where you're standing with cost savings, it would be great, but I think we need to take that.
Okay, so that's, that's all I'm asking. I've advocated door to brush pickup before, I'm not saying I want to get rid, I'm just wondering what the actual cost, like if we're looking at nickel, dimes and pennies, just.
I can have that for you tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm just putting out any of the things I could be loading through, I know the I need the, at my house, but I've been saying, I'm trying to figure out what the actual dollar amount was.
I'd love that tomorrow.
I think, um, as the city looks for this, adds to the quality of life, it gives it a good value. I think the guys have done great. Um, I'm thinking that, uh, for new business, um, if we should do a scientist for Penny or someone in that position, that maybe we could also look for volunteers that would be interested in being at the Tavisky Center during part of the day, so that, that building could be open, maybe, you know, Pride, Duivacation, Garden Club, uh, there's, uh, other people that sew and they might enjoy the building and that would be nice to have it open more to the public. So, um, that's one thing that I've been thinking is volunteers and maybe, like they said before, uh, some people donation, maybe, maybe all the councils want to give up their pay to the end of the year for all the kids and brush cleanup and everything, just a little something, maybe things far more, make a little difference here. Um, but that's my, that's, I'm good with that, anyone else?
Just, just one, I don't know, more of an idea discussion, but we, uh, prior to the next council meeting, for the public to be able to hear, and I know we thought a little bit earlier, but maybe give a new system of trial run, maybe, I'd be willing to volunteer myself, operate from home, uh, to, to check the quality of sound, uh, make sure that we've got adequate audio and, uh, I'm happy to, in any way, make sure that, uh, many people that want us to take this, remember the presentations of.
Do we do live news or the, the, like, live screen? No, I mean, from like, if I set up my phone at the back of that room and I put it on Facebook Live and I put my phone up there, they would have better audio and visual than, uh, what they're getting now. It would be necessary.
Look, if we were in the back of the room, we have to take the live screen. If that is a recording device, which is a regular, like, um, but we kind of push that over speed off the live screen. What, what that will allow is for the people to view and certainly, okay, they're not using it.
And that's a double issue.
But we can, we can start with, live screen from the back camera, records the webinar and people that are, they're, you know, they're being, you know, two Macs. You know, with Air, Air change leaves two devices or two tablets. You have to have a laptop, an iPad or computers, a computer, a cell phone or whatever, two boxes, a coat for them. Um, but it's just purely an option and we certainly have to, that is just to, I think it's a little bit audio.
Thank you. The, uh, you both, uh, second meeting, goodbye.
I think we were more sort of looking for, we were gonna do a tool call or something, based on a date you were already available, I know, like the vacation plan, can't remember.
Well, that's the end of the day, just like.
Yeah. So I heard, is the next regularly scheduled council meeting, and traditionally the council meets once in July and once in August. Um, I had suggested to the mayor, who brought up that in lieu of having special meetings, uh, that we could look at having two meetings in July or two meetings in August if, if there was enough material that needed to be addressed. Um, and the plan was, there are some vacations that were, uh, scheduled both from council both, yeah. Um, but we thought we would bring, based on the agenda for the thirteenth, we would let you know if we thought there was a need and like council wants to schedule something, uh, we, we thought we'd do it based on, on need.
I, I would like to have three, four meetings. This is great weight loss here, I'm, the pounds going right off due to the heat, so I could use the council meeting to lose weight. I think it's, I think it was necessary, it was not.
Do you see the need, I mean, do you want to do two in August, do you want to do one in July, do you want to do two in July, I mean, what do we want to do here?
Two, two?
I think it's, I think your question is ultimately what the council wanted to do.
I'm, I'm, I was just wondering if, if you see a need for something in the pressing that we have to get.
Are you sure? I'm gonna miss out on this.
Well, at the thirteenth, we can do that. How about the thirteenth?
The thirteenth, there's still more items, we just call them, make it a fun time, maybe each night.
Other songs for the, okay. You know, we need twenty-four hours.
That's what we're trying to avoid though, right?
Yeah, the special meetings are really what we were trying to avoid, but, uh, like I said, our plan was to gauge the items that would be on the July thirteenth agenda, um, hold departments to see if there were items that might require action later in the month or early August before the August meeting. And if it looked like there were things that really should be addressed, um, to, to suggest that at the July thirteenth meeting, um, but, and I would stand by the recommendation. So if it does look like there's a need from staff and also if council chooses, uh, that I'm also, you could let us know.
If there's one in July and if we need a second one in thirteen, if we need a second one in July, we can determine that, the, on the thirteenth and the now, we'll see you in August.
Can we do with that?
Just bring this to items for discussion. Um, and just bring this to citizen participation. At this time, if you would like to address council, please use the raise hand feature. The city clerk will recognize and unmute one person at a time and you will have two minutes to speak.
The first individual that we have is registered as Bill McNally and I will unmute that person now. Appears you are self-muted, first. And that person has dropped off, they may have spoken air, I don't think we've got them now. The next individual we have is Doug Lachler and I will unmute that individual now. Mr. Lachler, if you're, Michael Alden, can you hear us?
Uh, yes, uh, I, I'd just like to address as, as a citizen and taxpayer, the resolution you passed concerning the city attorney. Transparency, Counselor Reese, what you passed tonight is not transparent. My other concern is, and I'll address this to Mary Scally, uh, maybe the next time we have a situation where you have to address the city attorney, maybe we can, the next time have Counselor Powers, Counselor Dillabow, Counselor Kennedy on that call. And then the next time you have a problem or we got a concern, maybe we can have three different counselors on there. And my last thing is, this resolution you passed, does this lock the city manager into a position to request help and, uh, information from the city attorney?
I didn't hear that last question.
Uh, no, Doug, uh, the manager always, uh, and, and department heads through the manager can request legal.
Okay, then, as every one of you sitting at that table tonight have been elected by taxpayers of this community, so I would believe and I would hope that anybody sitting there that has a legal question should be able to go to the city manager, the city manager ought to be able to take care of that legal question with the attorney and then it's shared by the entire council. I think that would be transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
The race itself, the administration staff, under five D, that's all instructions and directions of the managers, the council, the council, that's all, after approval of majority. Right? Approval of the, that's, it's already in there, majority. Okay, we're, we're, information, and I'm not, I'm not arguing with you guys, the administrative regulations, the actual point here is to get, is the information going forward that we as other members of council on privilege, we have the majority moved it forward, the majority moved it forward, but we're still not having, we're not part of the discussion in some of these meetings, that, that's the only concern. Not, I'm suggesting violating against the administrative regulations, but going forward to have a discussion here or via through email communication, through the city manager or acting city manager to send forward the request, so that we're all, and then, regarding the matter going forward, that's the only, that's, that's my only.
Yes, we have one more individual registered as Genell Fisher and I will unmute that individual now. Appears that you are self-muted. Person is self-muted, I'm unable to unmute them. Did you want me to move to the next to see if they're able to.
Yes, please.
So the next individual is registered as Scott McRavis and I will unmute that individual now. Appears you're mighty.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could clarify, um, the resolution that you passed tonight for a public hearing regarding the city police and fire chief, you stated how vital a role they play within their city departments that yell, yet you are not filling those positions even on an interim basis. How is that possible if they're that vital?
That was directed at you, John, so we'll wait for a response.
I appreciate your question and it's really not a question and answer period, citizen participation, you're allowed to comment, though, but, uh, we fully intend to appoint a fire chief and a police chief as soon as we, um, you know, we have time, there's no urgency to do it and, uh, so.
They're that vital, how do you have time if they're that vital?
It'll be all right, yeah, hang in there.
Yeah, I'm fine.
I have one quick question regarding personal.
Fucking asshole, I don't care.
I love, love, I'm, 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 I can't, but it's also, it's also, if you don't want to.
Yeah, so they ask questions, you don't want to be stood there either.
I, I.
Well, and I, that's why I guess, I guess that's the question I have, the difference between the two, was facing the, the protest, wanting to, we used to hold that, um.
It was usually attached to the backside of the agenda when the public came in.
Where public, public. And it says, and, uh, based that you will just, any government point you just tell with, well, address one person, one call, one person, no. Probably, uh, probably, that's, that's, that's real, that was the way I, I.
You're absolutely correct, you're absolutely correct. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, she chose, thank you, good clerk.
Uh, anyone else?
Um, so the only other person we have is registered as Genell Fisher, that person who, who has, who's been employed, and it's an accident, okay. We confirm that that is an accident and I do not need any other individuals with your hand, right?
We, we have no need for executive session.
No, no.
There is executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Collective negotiations pursue article fourteen of the conservative law. I guess we, we have to session.
We're, we're, call, call that.
I don't.
You have a minute to do that.
I have one, I have a second.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a minute too.
I make a motion, we move into the executive session.
I'll say it.
Any action coming out?
I'd be saying, I don't, I do not anticipate any action coming out.
Continue with the motion, turn the turn after, is that the question?
But I did, I do, uh, reply to that, council.
We're good with the journey after, is that the session, no, actually, I'm out. On favor?
I, I. Andrew, yeah, thanks for the motion. Intersect, I, I. I'm going to reiterate the motion, I'm not here, I think, I'm, thank you. Thank you, everybody.